Okay, we will start. We don't have a full panel, but we have a quorum, I believe. We'll find out by taking the roll.
Councilman Duper?
You're present.
Councilman Daley?
Here.
Mayor Protempore Popescu?
Here.
Mayor Riggsby?
Here.
Councilman Leonard is absent. There is a quorum.
Okay, we will start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mayor Protempore Popescu.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity you've given us to serve our community. We ask that you be with us as we preside over this council, gives us wisdom, and help us make the best decision possible for everyone involved. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item one is a public hearing to approve the annual report, an assessment for Landscape Maintenance District Number One, Public Works. I guess the report is all in writing. Yes. Oh. How about oral reports? Would the public like to speak on any items not on the agenda? I don't have any written requests for any comments, so this is your chance. Going, going, go on. Thank you. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
We will be asking for item number three, to be continued, but we still have to have the public hearing for it.
Okay. And there was no closed session to report. And now, item number one, public hearing. Landscape Maintenance District. Who is the reporter?
Mr. Mayor, gentlemen, members of the council, this item for you is the public hearing set forth as noted in the last meeting. This is the time and place for the annual report to be reviewed, heard, any protests, or agreement for the Landscape Maintenance District. You have a copy of the report in your packets. I'm here for any questions, should you have any.
I have a question. In the analysis section of the report, it identifies the assessment is 393 and the expenditures is 473. I understand that the balance comes from the general fund, but can you explain the difference between the assessment and the expenditures?
In an effort to keep the assessments consistent with the last few years, and we have some that are at their maximum, we have an issue as far as the costs go, as they keep arising. The first 50 assessments are limited, as far as being able to do a cost adjustment on an annual basis. Starting with assessment number 51, we included a CPI adjustment, and that's what happens for the first 50, it causes a deficit.
So ultimately, we expect these will be closer together with the CPI?
No.
I'm not quite tracking you, I guess.
The first 50 assessments, there are 79 assessment districts, and the first 50 did not include a CPI adjustment.
I see, okay.
When they were set up. The only way we can get a CPI adjustment to be included is a vote of the people. It is felt that at this time that the support for an extra tax would be very limited, and so we are looking to the council to approve general fund expenditures to cover the balance for meantime.
Okay, and in that meantime, is the differential increasing year by year?
Oh, I see what you're saying. No, actually, we are diligently looking to decrease the cost by changing out some of the more expensive type of landscaping. The turf is one of our biggest expenses because of the use of water. And we are looking to alternatives. We've tried some dryscaping, we've tried some hardscaping. We've gone to a zero water usage type material. We have, relative to Boulevard, we put in some astroturf, some artificial. So we are looking at ways to decrease that, and we are investigating each and every of our districts to see if we can control costs in a better fashion.
And I realize we're here to talk about approving the funding for this, but I have another question, and that is the medians just east of California on Barton Road. My understanding is that those are maintained by the property owners that are adjacent to them, such as across from Heart and Surgical Hospital, is that correct?
That is correct. On that particular one, they have not joined the assessment district yet. They are resisting, and we are encouraging them to maintain it themselves in the meantime. They had a two-phased project there originally, and there was going to be a medical office building on the corner, and at that time, they were going to join the assessment district. As you know, that's not happened yet. The ownership of the heart hospital has transferred, and the new owners have chosen not to pursue the second phase at this time. When they do, that will be a condition of approval.
Because I complained to the university, and then I noticed they did go in and mow all the weeds down, but there's nothing in there but freshly growing weeds now.
You are pursuing the correct owner, sir.
And what about the next median up across from the apartments? Do the apartment owners responsible for that? Are we supposed to maintaining that?
We maintain that one, yes, sir.
Well, we're not doing a good job on that one either.
I will ask our consultant and vendor to tune that up.
Okay, because a lot of these up on Barton Road, I really think we do a wonderful job with, but down at that end, it's looking pretty bad, and that's kind of the entrance to our city. And so I'm not sure if there's anything we need to do except complain and hear about it, or if I need to make some phone calls, I'm willing to do that, but I think those need to be maintained.
We will pursue that more strenuously.
Okay, thank you.
It is my understanding, and tell me if I've been misinformed, that these maintenance districts are required to be self-funding, and that the law does not allow for transfers of funds from the general fund into the maintenance districts, or out of the maintenance districts back to the general fund. Is that true, and are we operating a bit outside the bounds of the law here and being generous, or what's your understanding?
I will have to refer to legal counsel.
Because the implication being that if indeed we're not allowed to do this, then we would be forced to underspend and allow their weeds to grow, and then that would generate the public outcry for a tax reassessment, but...
Yeah, I don't think there's any prohibition on the city using general fund to supplement the assessment district. That is of public purpose and not a gift of public funds to a non-public purpose, so. But we are limited as to the increases of the assessments by Prop 218, and that was mentioned already and stated in the report. So we have to live within that. At some point, if it became, if there was a public support for an increase, you could certainly pursue that.
And if there were one of these elections to determine if the increase would occur, is it something that could be handled with a mailing, or would it require ballot boxes?
I haven't looked at the procedure on the assessment district election, but we could report back on that. I believe generally under Prop 218 that it does require a majority vote of the property owners affected, and I think that could be by mail-in ballot, but we have to actually receive a majority. It's not a protest situation, so it's a little more problematic.
So it's not the absence of no's, it's the presence of yeses, which would be very difficult to achieve.
Yes, the effect of property.
Yeah, so our alternative to doing what's been proposed by staff is to defund that district and then just let the weeds grow.
Well, I don't oppose that.
Yeah.
Well, does this also include the new Mountain View on-ramp, off-ramps where we put the rock?
No, sir.
That is not part of the Landscape Maintenance District?
That is not. That's actually Caltrans Right-Away.
That's who?
Caltrans Right-Away.
Okay, so even though we did the landscaping there, the maintenance is their responsibility?
Actually, for them allowing us to do that landscaping, they also require that we maintain it.
Oh, so we do maintain it?
For agreement, yes, sir.
Okay. We are growing, just an observation, we grow a couple tumbleweeds a month up there in the way we have that. Maybe that should be my community service to go up there and dig those out, I guess.
Who did the work up there with that rock?
Trico, a general contractor.
Under contract with us, or with?
Correct, under contract with us.
Not Caltrans?
We did the bid process, it was a public bid, et cetera.
We're getting a little off track. I don't know that they did the greatest job. I watched them put it in, and it has kind of failed since day one.
Yeah, that's not on the agenda.
Well, I didn't know if it was part of this vote that we're taking. Let's just say city beautification is a priority with some of us.
Yeah, and if any of you attended any sandbag meetings, you'd find very quickly that Caltrans does not have the budget to maintain what they have, let alone any new stuff. So the fact that we're doing it, I think, is the only way it would ever happen. So, okay, any other questions of staff, because we need a public hearing? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to talk about the Landscape Maintenance District? Maybe an outcry of support for an increased tax on the... I don't see any. Okay, we will close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council on Council Bill R-2013-17?
I'll move it. Second.
Is there any other discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We go to item two, public hearing on the annual report and assessment for the streetlight benefit assessment district.
Similar to item one, this is for the streetlight benefit assessment district. However, the difference here is that it is in the black as opposed to the red.
And it's in the black because we have cost-effective lighting?
We are slowly changing over to cost-effective lighting, yes, sir.
And we're using the surpluses to invest in cost savings for the future?
Correct.
Maybe we could...
Help me understand when you say it's in the black, because again, I'm looking at assessment of 342 and expenditure of 369.
That's investment.
What's that? Anticipated assessment.
You haven't learned from politicians at the federal level that deficits are investments, not expenditures?
Oh, I see, I know what you're saying. Is it the same kind of an explanation? Because again, the assessment amount is lower than the expenditure amount.
And because we also have a, currently, we have a surplus, so we're trying to draw down the surplus in a controlled fashion, instead of all at once, a little bit each year.
Okay.
So there's an operating surplus, and you're just investing in the future by spending down the surplus? Does that make sense?
Some of it is used to replace, and what we've been doing, as you are aware, we are changing from the high-pressure sodium to the LED, which saves about half. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions for the staff? Then I'll open the public hearing. Anybody excited about light maintenance districts? This is your chance, your moment in the sun in the LED.
We could replace the landscaping with LED lights, like disco ball lights.
We could. We could put LEDs in place of grass and then shift the funding. Okay, no public takers. We'll close the public hearing. What's your pleasure on R-2013-18?
I'll move that one also.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Do we need to talk at all about number three, or just open and then?
Staff would like to continue this to the August 27th meeting.
So I will open the public hearing. If there's anybody here who wants to talk about item three, knowing that the bulk of the discussion will be at the next meeting, August 27, this is your chance. Otherwise, we will continue it to the next meeting. Is that the motion?
We need to make a motion to continue?
To continue?
Yes.
To a date certain, August 27?
I will make a motion to continue until August 22.
Okay, any further discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Item number four, joint public hearing of the City Council and Housing Authority Board, so I'm hereby opening the Housing Authority Board pertaining to the sale of a parcel.
The applicant has withdrawn his offer.
That was withdrawn, so we're just going to dump that item? Okay. 4.1, public hearing again determining the costs related to the weed abatement program. Fire Department, we look forward to this report every year.
Twice a year.
This is the high point.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. We have just completed our spring weed abatement program, and I stand before you, as we do twice a year, as stated, to ask that you receive this report, approve it for the accounting of the costs, adopt the accompanying resolution, which we ask you to establish the liens on the assessed properties for the work that's been done. Background, this year, March 26 was the begin date for our spring weed abatement program. We looked at over 450 parcels. Of those, 316 notices went out. Of those, there were 37 parcels that were dealt with by the city contractor, and ultimately, you have a list there of 26 properties that decided to have, rather than pay the fee by the city contractor, go to lien on their tax rolls to have it paid in that avenue. So I'm asking you this evening to adopt this resolution and place those 46 properties in a lien condition.
I'm ready to move it if...
We need a public hearing.
Okay.
I do see some of the regular names on here.
Right, as we've said in the past, a lot of the regulars decide that that's just the smartest way for them to handle it. And it is a very good, I don't know if any of you have to get a contractor for weeds on your own property, but the city contractor is very, very reasonable, you know, and is probably, most of these folks have found that these are far more reasonable than trying to find somebody else to bring all their equipment in, and the cost is too much for them.
Okay, any other questions of staff? If not, then I'll open the public hearing. Is anybody here who's excited about weeds? Okay, no takers on that either. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. R-2013-24 is ready for your motion.
I will move it.
Okay, any further discussion, any opposition? As usual, hearing none, it's approved. We have the consent calendar. Is there anything that needs to be withdrawn from it? Okay, then our traditional approach is to discuss it right now. What's your issue with number 11?
I just see that we added, Confire added City Ranch Cucamonga now as a member. Is it a full board member, or?
Yes, that's correct, Councilmember. Rancho Cucamonga expressed interest in joining Confire as a member agency roughly two years ago. We met with our board, Mayor Riggsby is the chair of that board, created a pathway to membership. Part of that was that there would be a warm-up period for them to be part of Confire and make sure that's what they really wanted, as well as for the Confire agencies to have Rancho Cucamonga as a contracting agency. I think that has gone very well for that period, and they moved their board, they actually moved the request to our board, last board meeting, to formally become a member agency. In your council report, there's a formula in which they would buy in to the assets in which the five other member agencies have been contributing over the life of the JPA. So they are willing and they desire to buy in. Actually, they've been a big contributor, really, to Confire, to our different technical committees, the various committees. They have good staff that have contributed to a lot. So I think we've really treated them much like a member agency through the last two years, and so they're asking to move this forward. It's been approved. In all cities, we'll be the fourth, and next week, Colton will be the last agency to approve this, and they will come on board. Was there more to that question? Is there any details that you were curious about?
Do you know who's going to be sitting on the board from Rancho?
No, that hasn't been declared at this time.
It's whoever they send. We don't know. But their council is mostly retired fire, so.
Their council is their board, is their fire board as well, so one of their council members. Hasn't been determined yet.
Yeah, just to let you know what's happened on the board of Confire, there's a little bit of a dispute over what to do with the money that they're spending to buy in, because if you treat our membership there as though it were a share in a company, then when you've got the same number of shares of stock, you actually sell them to someone else so that they can buy in. So under that model, we would get cash out that they're buying, that we previously spent to create Confire as it exists. And if the way their share was calculated, it kind of assumes that we're going to be paid. Well, the board hasn't yet decided what to do with the money, because if the money goes into a trust fund and becomes another asset of Confire, then they should have paid more to get into it. You know, the formula was wrong for that model, so we're working through that currently. And there's the possibility that we could be getting some cash out of the deal, so.
What about taking that money and putting that into the High Desert, Esoc?
Well, it sits in our reserves, and those are the monies we would go to do work up in that center. We've been able to do most of the work up there so far on grant monies, but we have had some additional investment, and so, yes, that would go into the reserves in which we would draw to do projects up there in that center. An additional piece of this is also the name change. Confire was the consolidated fire agencies of the East Valley. Well, we've, years ago, really expanded way beyond that, where really most of the region up to the High Desert. Rancho represents probably an important piece for Confire in going to the west, and really Chino Valley years back was a member, but then they went to Ontario with some of their west and other western agencies. Rancho represents really the first, really, of the western agencies coming back into the consolidated center there, and that's a big step. I think there's other agencies that will also look at those, really what we've brought to the table. We've done a lot of, a number of things with the EMD and the emergency medical dispatching and some other things in Confire this next year. Some of our goals ahead, we're looking at some of the CAD-to-CAD talk to further expedite dispatch time. So I think as we continue to progress, more agencies will continue to look, and I think this move by Rancho represents a big step forward on the east end of the valley. And so the name is simply, we'll go to consolidated fire agencies, period, and we'll be dropping the East Valley piece of that.
I'd like to pull item eight just for a couple of questions as well on the fire report.
Is there any other discussion on 11? Are you satisfied? Okay, item eight, go ahead.
Is this an unusually busy month, or is, when I see that there were 10 vegetation fires and seven structural fires in one month, that seems like a lot of activity. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, busy month.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, you know, we are in the fire season, so the vegetation fire amount isn't shocking for this time of year. Probably the amount of structure fires within that period is a bit of a surprise.
Were there any of those serious fires, or?
No, all fairly small, that were limited to the first alarm response. So some of those can be single rooms, kitchen fires, but nothing that resulted in the loss of a complete structure.
And when we say 19 calls this month for mutual automatic aid, help me understand what that means. I know, I understand medical aid and traffic collision, but what is mutual automatic aid?
So let me give you an example on a traffic collision on the freeway, eastbound I-10 at California. Well, California is about as close as you can get. It's roughly in between. On that dispatch, Loma Linda will be dispatched and will go eastbound, Redlands will come westbound, and depending on whose dirt it lands in, that call will go to that agency. Or, like at Loma Linda, a commercial structure response goes beyond the capacity of our agency. So if it's on the east side of Anderson, I have a Redlands unit coming in. If it's on the west side of Anderson, Colton, and down along the Redlands Boulevard, often San Bernardino City Medicage and 231, that's built into the CAD, the computer-aided dispatch. She knows what call type and what type of resources I get for that call type. If I'm on drawdown, or it's beyond the capacity of our available units, it automatically dispatches a unit. That's automatic aid. We also deliver the same, you know, the same agreement to our neighboring agencies, Redlands, Colton, San Bernardino. So it's already built in the CAD, the script for what resources are dispatched to what incident. And if we are the closest available resource, we go to theirs as well. So that's what automatic aid is. Mutual aid is, the bigger fires, the strike team assignments, the larger regional incidents, that's mutual aid. It's not necessarily built-in automatic, you know, in the CAD for daily response, but we're all part of the California Mutual Aid System, and that's what your greater alarm fires, our vegetation fires are built off of.
I guess I was wondering if our new mutual relationship with the fire department in the city of Colton is increasing our activity?
No, no, that wouldn't have been reflected there.
Okay.
It's just the time of season, it's the time of year, and there's, we're on a number of strike team assignments anywhere from, we've had the Ukipa fire, some Highland fires in the past. Our resources just got back from up in the Idlewild incident as well. So those would represent the mutual aid type pieces of that, as well as the automatic aid that I explained. I have had numerous compliments. I guess the crew isn't here, but the Ukipa... I have had numerous compliments. I guess the crew isn't here, but on the Ukaipe fire, the one structure that was partially lost was only partially lost due to the actions of our crew that was on that incident. So, I've had several Calfire chiefs that were the incident commanders seek me out at some other fires out here in the canyon, and so, we are, crews are out representing us well and working hard, so.
Good, well, sounds like busy times. Thank you.
Okay, does that satisfy you, number eight?
It does, and I'm ready to move the...
I'll second. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Any opposition?
I'm surprised there was no objection to number 17. I thought for sure we would hear from the mayor on that.
I saw that, I just...
Yeah, I actually, I actually approved that one because it's a, it's a blind intersection with foliage on the side, and, you know, we're cutting them down elsewhere. We might as well use them.
Yeah. This is a blemish, a blemish in your record.
I'm, I'm opposed to four-way stops that are unnecessary. I don't believe in allowing just free roaming of cars. And when there's a two-way stop, it needs to be in the correct direction. So, we're working on fixing some of those. So, if there's no opposition, then the consent calendar is approved. Now, we have old business. We're revisiting special planning area D's, a couple of council bills. Do we go, I guess we had the major discussion at the last meeting. This is the second reading. What do we need to do besides just reading it off and voting it?
Well, a motion would be to approve by, reading by number entitled only, and then a roll call vote to approve. Well, they're separate ordinances. I usually prefer those to be handled separately.
I'll move that we read by number entitled only. For 2013-01. We do need a second for that.
Second.
Okay, clerk will instruct you to do so.
It is entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, amending the East Valley Corridor specific plan. Plan boundary along parcels south of Redlands Boulevard and generally between Enterprise Drive and Brinmore Avenue. It's known as specific plan amendment number 13-035. And you may vote.
Yes is the farthest end, no is in the middle, abstain is closest to you. She'll, she'll, she'll flash it at the end.
Okay. It passes unanimously.
Okay, now, would someone move the second one, O-2013-02? Second. Madam Clerk.
It is entitled an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, amending the official zoning map of the City of Loma Linda from city zoning, single-family residents R1, planned community PC, and East Valley Corridor Specific Plan Special District, the EVC-SD, to East Valley Corridor Specific Plan Special District, EVCSD, and city zoning, single-family residents R1 for parcels south of Redlands Boulevard and generally between Enterprise Drive and Brinmore Avenue. Zone change number 13-036. And you may vote. And it passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you for that. I will relinquish command to Mayor Pro Tempore.
We're going to go ahead and have a separate motion for this demands register. Do I hear a motion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's all passes, and the meeting's adjourned.
You can't do it that fast. See? Give him an inch. Okay, we've got reports of councilmen. We can be almost as fast.
Getting the complaint, but we seem to have a invasion of skunks again. So, I spoke with the acting city manager, and Conrad, if you can explain to people here and anyone else that may be watching what alternatives they have. I know that we've had three sprains in my yard. I know there's a young lady that works at Rite Aid that's complained, and three other people. So, and I've heard threats, I passed this on to you already, threats of buying rat poison and sticking it out. One guy tells me he owns a gun. He's ready to start using. So, there is a better alternative, so maybe you can share with the public what that would be?
There are, there are better alternatives, and rat poison poisons cats and other pets too, so that's a bad idea. And the sheriff probably frowns on discharging firearms in the city. But this is skunk season, it's warm weather. Loma Linda, you know, although it is a city, we do have a, a large urban rural wilderness interface where those animals come out in, you know, warm weather. They're in here looking for water. They're also looking for food, so the best way to eliminate skunks is make sure that everybody, not just yourself, your neighbors, keeps your trash cans closed and put away and off the street, because they're coming down for food. They're coming down for the fruit that's falling off the trees. You know, this time of year, keep the fruit picked up. You know, those, they're coming in for food and water, and that's the reason they're here. You know, we do have traps that are available for residents to check out. We do, we'll trap the, trap the skunk and take care of them and dispose of them properly. But, you know, this, this is just part of living in urban wilderness interface, and it's, you know, it's an annual deal. Another month or so, the skunks will, when it cools down, the skunks will go away, and then we'll have other problems.
Seems to me that trapping a skunk would be the last thing I'd want to do.
Well, like I said, you trap it, we'll haul it away.
I don't want to...
Don't, don't bother it.
I want to shoo it away, not keep it on my property.
It will, it will spray you and go to your neighbor's property and, and continue doing. So, traps are available, but the best way is remove the food source, remove the water source, you know. If you have your dog bowl out or your cat bowl out on the back porch, bring it in at night, because they're coming, they like dog food and cat food. They come for the water. They're in the trash, they're in the fruit, under the, the trees. That's why they're here. It's a nice place for them.
And there are a lot of them. I don't know, maybe my neighborhood is prime territory, but...
It's everywhere.
All right, are they everywhere?
Yeah, and there's...
Even up in your own part of town?
And my neighborhood is blessed by a completely bald, shiny bald coyote with, you know, the end stages of mange, and it's the most scary-looking thing you've ever seen.
Probably got sprayed by too many skunks.
They, they look like a cross between a dingo and some kind of a monster. It's, it's, it's been losing its hair gradually over the last five years, and now it is shiny. It's dark gray and nasty-looking, so you want to trade? It's a coyote, yeah.
Take your coyote, because it might take care of my gophers.
Doesn't help with mine. I've got all my gophers. Maybe, do skunks like gophers? It'd be a good trade after a while. Yeah. Okay, any other reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers? Okay, then we will adjourn the city council. We already opened the housing authority. Let's finish the job. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No additions or deletions.
Okay, would the public like to speak on any item not on this very small agenda? No takers. We did our joint meeting that we ended up continuing, and the one we withdrew, so we have just the consent calendar.
I will move it.
Is there a second? Okay, is there any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Are there any chair board member reports? Any reports of officers? Okay, that's adjourned. We'll go to the successor agency of the redevelopment agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No additions or deletions.
Okay, would the public like to speak on any item not on the extremely truncated agenda? Hearing none, we move to the consent calendar.
I'll move that one also.
I'll second with the question.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved.
I had a question.
Oh. Wow. We're going to have a discussion?
Wow, depends. I'm looking at legal fees, and I'm noticing that there's two separate items for our attorney. One is for 8,000... Where is it? 8,200, and then again for 6,800. And then same attorney again was in the housing authority, so I'm just wondering, that's a lot of legal deals for a successor agency. Can we get a little bit of understanding as to why we're spending so much on legal fees?
The legal fees were associated with our trip up to Sacramento as well. We went up to, on the DDR for the non-housing funds, we did a meeting confer, and we actually went up and, and the prep before the meeting and all that. So, that, those legal fees would be included in those, those items, plus the regular monthly. And then we are currently, we did hire a separate attorney for the lawsuit against the state, but Mark Hips, our, our legal consultant for, for the former RDA is still kind of on board, kind of, and helped guide us to this new firm, so.
Okay.
So, there are legal fees associated with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments of board members? If not, then that agenda is adjourned, and we're done. Thank you all for coming.